They have a new position.
Yeah.
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 Oh.
So, yeah.
I'll share.
I saw that.
Offered themselves a position.
It's interesting.
One by one.
So what's that?
Get a few of these. Oh, I guess just general hugs.
No friends.
Uh, no one changed.
Yeah.
They were passing.
Yeah.
I'm gonna extend.
Great. Are you, uh? You live in here?
I am. The ground.
Which you all have been here since.
Exactly. So, uh, we kind of have some ground.
Good.
So, yeah. They were basically those towns. Are.
That's great. They're so nice. And you know that.
Yeah.
It has, it has.
Maybe they will solve.
Oh, perfect.
I'll tell you.
Well, yes.
Oh, or.
And.
Oh, we don't couldn't.
Any.
That'll be, that'll be great. Yeah. So, hoping it turns into.
Yeah, that I need to get out of there.
We go everyone.
Well, for your sake, I hope so.
I know you've raised the toll. And then post the model.
Okay.
I can't.
It'll be.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Probably not one of your biggest anniversary.
Probably not. You know, my last year, I had no one as well. I play on. You should put circle on it. Well, and you know, we had specifically, you know, I don't know how was the.
Yeah.
We had all that.
It's too bad when it's bad.
Then you guys are still sharing all that stuff.
Yeah.
Those definitely.
Uh, by chopping off.
They'd like to suck you into it.
I didn't do that.
They will.
Uh, food access is special.
A little.
I would be involved in schools and especially in all the different. First hand letters.
Yeah.
Don't forget your part.
But I think they have to skin them.
But so.
Your change role may find.
I'll say.
I was sort of.
Obviously.
Thing for that.
Yeah.
Uh, we also.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's just like.
I would say.
I mean, it's.
They both did the. All since.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's good.
Yeah. Oh, good. Good. Yeah. We love it. We love it.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
That's right.
One.
To go ahead and say.
That's all.
That'll help.
Okay.
What's your job?
Daniel.
Yeah.
She has a circle with the. It's actually.
Looks like a sword there.
This. But you don't want.
You do not.
Well, I don't.
Yeah.
That's.
Um, come on.
This occasion.
Yeah.
They're.
There are. In the. Focus.
And so.
Oh. I'm not going to.
He said, that's where we're staying up here.
Yeah. 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 Wow.
Okay, we're at the six oh one. Let's check and see if everybody's ready to rock and roll.
Shannon's ready.
I'm ready. Come on.
Janet's ready.
How?
My owl. How's still talking? That's definitely.
Focus.
Okay.
Keep, keep still talking.
Uh huh.
Uh, we know that Tim is not going to be able to make it this evening. Have not heard from Dana. Is anybody? Oh, Dana's on there? Oh, great. Hi, Dana.
Hello.
A little bit. Yes, please.
Owl's pretty impressive.
It is pretty impressive. I recommend. And from your side, when you were, it was clear about.
Perfect. Is he owl mayor picking up sound?
Yes.
Are these working?
I don't know if these are working or not. It may just be the owl. They do not.
Okay. I'm sure.
Well, you need three of them since they don't work.
That's me.
Okay.
If any wanted to.
Okay. If you want. They're, they're just kind of right here. I don't need to speak into it.
I can hear you all just fine.
Good, good, good. Well, it is six oh three. And at six oh three, we're going to call the city council work session. Uh, to order. The Simonson.
Uh, okay. I. About to start that. We, we want to roll. Sure. Roll call. Councilmember Larison here. Councilmember Phil is absent. Councilmember Luna.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Present.
Councilmember Jen.
Present.
Mayor Proton Green.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Okay. And just to note, we have Chief Italy, Chief Edwards, and I wanted to do an introduction to our new planning director, Chief Lontons. And, uh, we're glad to have him here during the planning partner presentation. Uh, Donald Schneider. And then, uh, joining us from the DOLA, our legislative affairs, is Dana Habba. Leba. And, uh, he's been helping facilitate the whole setting this evening. So, uh, we need to be agreeable of the agenda.
Might as well.
Right.
Does anybody have anything on this agenda that they would, uh, like to change? Hearing now that would indicate a motion for these.
Luna, that wants to put the agenda.
Just seconds. Near the discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The additions. Thank you. All right. Uh, in this, that case, we're into the discussion on goal setting.
Uh, well, unless you want it.
Oh, public comment.
You're really ready to.
Oh, man. I wrote.
I have. I.
I told my to six forty five. I don't know what to do.
Uh, well, yeah. You could say, are there any must see matters?
Yes. Well, we could. Anybody have anything I'd love to talk about?
I do. I have one quick question. We received an email and I don't know what the, from Andy Wember, Winberg. I'm forgetting that right. And I did not respond and I don't know what protocol is to respond.
What we, I can chat with you afterwards. It depends on the email. And it depends on if you were, and your choice of how much you want.
Okay.
Is this somebody who's in your ward?
No, he lives on East of Levitt.
Hmm.
And I only know that because it says it right below his name. I don't magically know that.
Well, I would, I would say in simple terms, if you have an answer for somebody, you can give them an answer. If you feel like something is to be elevated, uh, to the city administrator, you might do that. Um, just depends on, on the situation.
Okay. Thank you for that clear clarification.
All right, Dana, you can ask for housekeeping. Great. So we, we do, uh, a group of the comment for our work sessions. I do not see anyone here in person to do any public comment. I don't think we received any rebuttal for public comment. So unless, uh, anyone who's here wants to do any public comment. Hearing done, I guess that gets us to discussion on goal setting and we are, uh, five minutes ahead of schedule. All right. So thank you for, everybody for making the time for this meeting tonight. We. We started in a, a little bit later in twenty twenty two with our goal setting. We had a goal setting meeting in April. And at that time, I said, what I'd like to do is have our goal setting earlier so that we're ready for, we can get into budget process and, or the budgeting process. And during last council meeting, we talked about scheduling those work sessions. So in advance of that, what I, the purpose of this meeting is to have each department before to use their goals. And, uh, they are, each one has ten minutes and they all have, uh, I have gone over their goals with them to ensure that they are specific and manageable and table and, you know, time sensitive so that we actually have something. At the end of twenty twenty three, we can move back and see if we've actually checked the list. So something like do better is not to maybe back on and say, I accomplished that. So I'm very grateful for all the departments to join us, um, this evening. I want, uh, to start off with, uh, just the overall city goals. And I, I have told you that my computer just restarted the meeting during the. So what I wanted to start out with was just a recap of what we all discussed in April of twenty twenty two. And so needs to remind notes from our discussion. And I, I, I kind of tried to lump things and categories as we were talking about them. But then as I went over my notes, I, I, I lumped them together a little bit more. But this is just to recap and tell you where we ended up, or at least where we are right now. So number one issue, I think we discussed that lack of affordable housing. And Councilwoman Larson wanted, um, to create a subcommittee to identify the five blocks really are project for development of affordable housing by the city. That subcommittee was established. Nineteen, the subcommittee did meet and I believe that, that, um, reported to the city council at the May seventeenth meeting. Uh, that was my revelation. And is that, is that correct? The subcommittee members, so, uh, Governor Luna Leal was on the subcommittee as mayor was on the subcommittee, correct?
Yeah.
We reported and we had no things further from that.
Correct. Yeah. So we, we have still more work to do on that. But the goal was to create a subcommittee and identify that and report it back to the city council. So I realized there were more steps there, but just wanted to clarify. We, we have made, we have, we did accomplish the goal we set out for twenty twenty two on that. Uh, Councilmember Genski, uh, this, I think, where you were is to create a sustainable city team with a bandwidth response constituents. And I think I really appreciate these first few things being the top goals for the city because those are the first things I identified with the paper. Lack of affordable housing and employee retention. And so for employee retention, uh, absolutely fabulous. City used two hundred and sixty four thousand dollars of its stimulus plan money, federal stimulus money to, um, work on employee retention. That first payment came August eleventh. I got good feedback from employees that they were very grateful for that. And, uh, I think that we have lost some, a few people, but I do not think it's, um, entirely over pay. So I think that that definitely helps. You, um, created a human resources director position on July twenty twenty two. Doing my very best to get kind of position posted everywhere. Um, I don't know if you all know that the county and the school district are looking for a human resources director at the same time to win a little bit of competition. But that was completed. The other two things, evaluating tuition reimbursement and then evaluating partnerships with Colorado Public Schools and high school. I think that's in some part what triggered the discussion of creating a human resource position because they were the goals. But we weren't sure we had the person powers to do those. So those are not completed. That's now. Um, regarding infrastructure, park construction, it's going good. Uh, it's actually on track. Things are, it is in progress. It'll be a great addition to the north part of town. Uh, the Crossword Trail, Mayor did not have as much as that day.
It, it's complete.
That's my thoughts. The, the ballers for the, that project are in. Uh, there is a great update on the possible projects in the, our quarter, third quarter class update, uh, community update. Street paving for second and sixth street. Every week. We hear that it's going to happen next week. But it's going to happen. So, uh, second street is being prepared for paving.
Tomorrow.
Today.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It'll be, it's, they're supposed to start paving tomorrow. Um, but the, the, the person who was supposed to have completed the prep for that this afternoon had not finished. So I, I can't swear to you where that stands right this second, but the asphalt has been purchased. So we'd better be paving tomorrow.
So that one is in, in progress. Uh, hopefully we, uh, and then we, what's that? Tell me the schedule for sixth street because that is in it as well.
Uh, they're going to mill both sides of Sixth Street on Thursday, but it won't be paved, uh, until a week after next. So we renegotiated the price on that today. I'll go, uh, go over that with you later.
Okay. And then, um, this was a request from Councilwoman Luna Leal to install sidewalks on Sixth Street. So that is obviously, as we know, not completed, uh, but we can put that. I would like to create a capital improvement plan for the city for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. So we can figure out what priorities we have for our infrastructure improvements. Uh, Councilwoman Green wanted to read this department plan and that is on my list of goals in twenty twenty three. Because there are a lot in that parking plan that it's not just permitting, residential permitting system. There's a lot of things we can. Uh, Councilmember Hill had some, uh, requests for some goal of tourism, improving the relations between locals and tourists and then educating tourists. Just so you know, um, uh, Chief Edwards and I, I have, I at least spent at one, but meeting, but Chief Edwards is a standing member of Mineral Vault Trail Committee. We are working on educating tourists about etiquette on the trail. In fact, there was just a great little part that was published about how to behave when you're on the trail. Please bring your banners and pass nicely and, you know, curiously, travel lanes with the different types of traffic. We are also working with tourism panel on, there was a pilot education on race series and being a good visitor to the, um, community. And I work with Adam with ideas and places to push out that message for people who would, who were coming to town. And as far as the temporary use, uh, permit process, uh, the race series had a remote parking and additional four bodies. The after action reports for the race series indicated that things went pretty well. I got one email or one question from the citizen. Uh, it was a lot of misinformation about, um, certain things that should have happened or didn't happen. Um, there was misinformation that President Bofferts, the parents disclosed, man, actually was not. So other than that, I think we didn't, the city didn't get, uh, there was one question about access, uh, to the one part of.
E six.
Six.
My mother's E six.
E six. So in other than existing campus rental rentals, you achieve that and go to work session with planning and zoning commission on the fourteenth and decide to stay at work, but work on, um, tracking and information about, uh, what we are facing as far as short term rentals and, uh, better enforcement. The last one is communications. Uh, we, uh, this was county number, um, dark requesting a group city communications through website and website. It's city's website and use of social media. And, um, that is in progress. Sarah Dallas helped us update our website substantially when she was helping us. And now our city clerk, uh, Mike Silver, has updated our website with hacking information, agendas, resolutions, ordinances, uh, those types of things. It does need, and you'll see in the goals for this year, it does need overhaul to make it easier to navigate. And, uh, so whether or not we do that in-house or we have someone else do that, that's something we can discuss. Uh, but we also want to talk about hiring a communications person, whether it's a little bit of time or first time or full time. But I do think that that is probably the list of goals. Uh, it is the unlist of goals for twenty twenty three. Any? And I, I, I did let, uh, mine out probably a little over my time. Okay. So any questions about a recap? And I, I think I got pretty much everything. If I've forgotten anything, please feel free to bring it up. And we'll talk about goals for twenty twenty three.
Can I ask a question about the paving?
Please.
Uh, how is power paving fine in comparison to the paving?
It will come well short of what we, what we hope to do in the next, let's say, three to four weeks.
It, it's, it's more expensive.
It's going to be more expensive than that fund, but I'll, I'll bring that to city council. And it's, it's a conversation you have in the fairly near future.
And that's, uh, second.
Be, oh, second up all the way up to, all the way up to Aldo.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's East Second. And then it will be the five blocks of, um.
West.
No, pine.
A five blocks of pine.
And, and, well, that's from third to eighth where all that work is been done. We, we've been wanting to pay for six weeks and can't do it because no one can finish the work. So we'll get into that.
Okay.
And then the last thing will be, we decided we wanted to do those four blocks to the top of James of West Six. You know, it just to try and get something done that people would care about and appreciate. Uh, then we want to split some of those costs. Uh, six will be all ours. You know, but, but pine, there, there were different organizations doing work in pine. They should all be willing to help pay for that paving. And the same is true of Second Street. So that'll, that, that will be, uh, a negotiation with, with those organizations. Park for water, local sanitation and excellent sidewalks.
So there's an agreement in place now. We're, we're putting the bill at the beginning and then we're going to go for reimbursement in the future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chief, prepare this block.
Paving is tomorrow.
It will be done before, before the snow flies. Let's just.
Hmm. You better be careful.
Yeah, that's a very good statement.
Paving.
No, I know. The issue is they've been telling us next week for a long time. So I had to say, at what point do I need to start making a group call? Um, all right. So goals for twenty twenty three. So these are the overall, overall city goals. And then we'll talk about individual partner goals. But if you can see, number one is still employee retention. Uh, we absolutely cannot function as a city and do provide service without retaining the employees that we have. We've done a fantastic job of bringing some native people to the city. And, uh, the churn of losing people and the cost and the burden on our current staff is too much. So employee retention is number one priority. So you know what we're going to, what we're going to talk about is we just did a cost of living increase. We're going to need to evaluate the cost of living increases, uh, or salary adjustments again. Uh, unfortunately, I received the salary assessment we've been waiting three months for and it is not adequate for our needs. It is not the analysis that I wanted and it is not any analysis that is helpful to us. Um, I let our executive governments. And, uh, we in fact are going to look into getting a different consultant who did the city's salaries, salary assessment, which is what I want. A position by position. The recommended pay bands for the position and then letting us know how far we are off that criteria. So we know, well, this, right now, you're only paying forty percent what this pay band should be. That's what I wanted. Uh, we essentially got, uh, gosh, you should think about a five percent full increase for twenty twenty three. That's about what we thought. But we made it to the cost of that. So not many of us. But we will be looking at salaries, uh, and we will hopefully get better announces to help us look at that. The other things we can do is we can evaluate the competitiveness of these benefits package. Uh, there are probably some names that we can offer that aren't just, uh, you know, actual salary increase that might be helpful to employees. The other thing, uh, that other partners has brought up is evaluated wellness benefits. You know, perhaps we can get discounts, other cities have discounted population passes for employees. That's something that we can just negotiate and, and perhaps that's something that doesn't cost us any money, but is important to employees. We can also evaluate flexible work schedules. You know, a lot of people are here because they enjoy the outdoors and we can retain good employees by flexing more scheduled than that's available. So now here we'll, you'll see another carryover from the other roles, communications. I really would love to improve our communications with the public. Uh, we talk about hiring a communications person. But Taylor does tell me is that is we need overhaul the city's website to make eighty eight compliant by July one twenty twenty four. Since we need really a better, uh, informational website to begin with, then I think it's something that we can think about at twenty twenty three. It's difficult to find information on our website. I struggle to find information. Uh, W C clerk has been doing a great job printing things down, putting things on our website, but it's still pretty difficult to navigate. We also need to make sure it provides accurate and updated information. So if you are surfing our website and the plans, we've got to get a place to go because we are trying to. I think a lot of people these days rely on the city's website to do business with the city. And maybe do better customer service with people who want to get, and we can talk about that permits and so forth. Getting that information from our website, I think is important. The other thing I think we need to do is we need to convey information to the public better. Uh, we don't have a person to defend the leases. We don't have that luxury. But what I'd like to do is create an electronic newsletter for the city where you can subscribe to it and it comes out on a, uh, some, some, whatever, a, a schedule basis. So for example, if we actually do have the asphalt ready and the trucks ready to dump the asphalt, we can say paving's going to happen or paving did happen. Or for example, we, I pushed out some information around the Fourth of July about fireworks restrictions to department heads. And Adam, who are in the house, so this is fantastic. People have been asking about this. Can we have a? Um, Excel energy is providing me all kinds of stuff about things that they're doing and saying, you could put this in your newsletter. I don't have one. So I think that would be a great thing, but there's lots of communications. Uh, so one of the things I would love asked for in the budget is a communications person. The other things I sort of lumped together are some of our managing tourism impacts on the city. Uh, we are working on creating administrative policies for compliance on short term rentals. We have been doing a lot better this year on short term rent compliance. Uh, I think that we are wanting to change the culture in level about short term rental compliance. And W C clerk is working on a policy for that. We want, I would like to schedule and I'll ask you this in the next regular schedule council meeting, your date to hold a work session on Samford Times. They're popping up everywhere. There are a lot more of them. I think it's something we need to address policy wise. Uh, other things that have come up, there was a work session on O H D, uh, use and impact within city limits. The next to discuss that, I think we need to think about drafting the noise ordinance. And I, not just for O H Ds, but I think it's part of the O H Ds. And, uh, I think we need a policy discussion on how much more commercial use, uh, we want and the type of commercial use permitted in city limits regarding employees. So whether it's a moratorium or certain types of caps on rentals, I think that our discussion that we probably need to have one sooner or later. Uh, this is for Councilwoman Green. I want to work on evaluating the recommendations outlined in the twenty twenty one downtown breaking assessment. There's a fantastic amount of information in that, but I think we can, uh, use for a lot of things, not just residential parking. But, uh, whether it's, but easing snow removal or easing the burden on some of our bigger events in town. And then we talked about long term parking. Uh, I would like to, when I talk to Mayor about this street, um, use the part of the park, the Tabor Opera House and create paid long term parking for people who want to come here and leave the vehicle for a week at a time. Um, we've had calls from police department saying, where can I park my vehicle? If I want to be here for a week under the roof height and we don't have a great place. It would be, I think, beneficial for the community to have a place where someone can park and if they were willing to pay an amount for night, that would be good running, um, for the city. The last thing is, I've talked to so many people about this. Uh, representatives, um, from Senator Bennett's office came down and talked to us and forgot all the grant money that's going to be flowing with federal grant money, state grant money, housing, lots of things, transit. You see, that's great. The wealth of communities benefit from that because they have people to chase the money. They have people to chase the money, so they get the money, so they have no more resources, so they have no resources to chase the money. I would like to pursue, uh, a longer grant. And so two things we can do is train two employees to do grant writing. Uh, everybody's click silver is working on getting some trade right now. And then I want to seek that grant opportunities by subscribing to any and all mailing lists. Say, here's what's in the. Uh, it's hard for us to go website, like website places down. But subscribing to other people's distribution list is a great way for us to know about things. So those are overall, uh, city goals. Obviously, it's with the caveat that we still want to provide great customer service, which we're all thinking we're currently doing. But these are some new, newish things we'd like to be accomplishing.
Um, three A for short confront on compliance. I would like to see our code updated to have some consequences if we achieve. Because, uh, one instance we had last year, there was no consequence. It turned around and, uh, unfortunately, I don't like to open up and got to.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things we need to look at.
Yeah, I remember that. Consequences. Hopefully for F U Q. Oh, they should leave, leave the ride for a year or something or go to the end of the line or something.
Yeah. I remember that. And then what I I wanted to mention, what the idea for tonight is, what we would do is do each reporting on malls, and then if there were one, if you want to have a discussion at that point, you can have a discussion at that point. Rather than having to sit through all of them and then have sort of free-for-all discussion. So if there's discussion on any of the overall city goals, I think we can do that now. And then, you know, of course, there will be a continuing with that all, but if there are discussion points on these right now, or if there's a general agreement on these right now, then we'll do that for each. Department or each section.
I would like to to make a comment about the OHB, the moratorium on OHB rentals. First of all, we don't have any OHB rentals in the city of Level, but we have two guiding businesses. So that that moratorium would have to be on guiding end rentals. And I can tell you, being involved in this conversation, what what my personal goal will be is, I think guiding is a good thing, but I'd like to limit it to what what we have now when we go to an ordinance. But I would I would like for us to not allow OHB rentals in the city of Level. That's my personal opinion about this and how to to try and and create responsible recreation throughout Lake County. So we'll leave it at that, but moratorium needs to happen sooner rather than later in life.
Can I, because this is the administration department goals, right? And so.
Oh, no, we were actually.
The city, the city of Level goals, so when we talk about this, it's six thirty right now, we're going to be here for. For until eight is when we're supposed to happen. How how long is each department going to be able to report out? What's the timeframe here?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? And so they're going to have, we're going to have ten minutes discussion, and we have, what, four eighty minutes worth of of. Well, with with discussion afterwards, I'm just making sure I understand this, because one thing, when it comes to the city of Level goals, I like the idea that it's employee retention, like, number one, employee retention. Right? But like, is that, that's maybe an objective, but what's like our goal? I mean, and I was just looking at like the goal of Apple's company, right? It's like, are we bringing the best employee experience to our community? That's our goal. We want to make sure that we have, I mean, I'm just, I I mean, I want to make sure that we're framing this right, that that is is that employee retention and improving the city communications with the public part of. One goal, and that's an objective within those goals. And I might be, and I I know I was getting caught in this league before, but like, I truly want to make sure that we're going from a strategy. A strategy is more long-term, and the objectives are what we then create, like those short-term task purpose end states too. Like a task purpose end state is, we need to get the the a newsletter, that's an end state, right? That's not, that's that's part, that's an end state of an objective, right? So what's our objective? And I'm I'm trying to get, I'm sorry about that.
No, okay, I'd be careful not to get too too deep into the semantics of this.
I mean, but like, is employee retention, like, I know it's important, and I'm not saying it isn't, that's not what I'm getting at, but like, what's our true goal, right? Are we trying to bring the best employee employee experience to the city, to to our community as part of the city level? That's what I'm asking, and with that, are we doing, is employee retention important to that? And how do we keep employees? What's that best employee experience? Is it because we have benefits that they're they they receive? Is it because they have flexible work schedule? Is it because they have competitive benefits? Like I said, I might be going around in a circle and chasing my own tail, right? And I'm getting caught up in the semantics, but like. How do we get from like the overall goals to the objectives?
Right, and with the employee, with employee in general, is we went this year from triage, literally like individually. Me and department heads having meetings with people saying, please don't leave. So I think our goal was in the beginning, just honestly begging people to not leave. So when we get to, are we creating the best experience? We're probably going from triage to emergency room in twenty twenty-three. So are we going to get to best employee experience? I would love to spend more time really focusing on what would that be for us? And what does that imply? Wouldn't people come here and work? What is their best experience look like? If there's lots of ways you're being incentivized with ways to stay, it may not things that work elsewhere may not work here, because I understand why people come to Level. There's a particular reason why people come here, maybe that they have handled it, or they open a business here, or they want to recreate outside. And so that's why I put a handle on things on, I wouldn't necessarily say that this is the be all and all. I guess what I'd like to say is. I think our goal is frankly, to not be in triage anymore, and not literally have one person trying to run the entire department.
And and I guess I get that as like twenty twenty-three, and and if that's our goal of twenty twenty-three for employee retention, to look and evaluate those, right? As an example, if we were looking five years out, right? That's the strategy, five years out. So where does that fit? If we were to go up from the immediate ten thousand foot level right now to the thirty thousand foot long-range strategic goals, right? Where do you want to go five years, ten years from now? And how is that goal then making the city of Level the best place to work?
I'd say our five to ten year goal is frankly to have a stable workforce, where some departments don't even have enough stability. They're training new people faster, as fast as they're beginning, because we can't pay them enough. And so a stable workforce and redundancy. So right now, if we lose one key person, then we're going to, we don't have payroll. No one gets paid. So I I private tenure plan, we have a redundancy that sort of one person needs and, I mean, it almost sets the point where literally if one person's not, we're just going to have to close the doors at City Hall and say, we're not looking today. You can't get a business license today, I'm very sorry. So and frankly, that's happened. I've been around, and someone's come down with a whole year of business license, and I said, that person, the only person who gave you a business license is in the lunch. Can you wait fifty minutes? And most people are nice guys, but I'd rather not have that. So the 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 five to ten year goal, we need employee retention, but it looks like we have a stable workforce and have. People who are cross-trained to do the job so that we're not completely facilitated for being on site. It's a big ask. It's going to take a while to get there.
Yeah, I mean, I hope that we can go faster than five to ten years to retain people and have over. I mean, that's what I'm hoping. Look at all the great people we already have moving on, and so that's great. Yeah, that's, so we're we're getting going in the right direction.
Absolutely. I ask over.
I will, I will, I will reclaim my comments. Thanks.
Okay, so if everyone is okay, I just keep things moving along. I would like to just talk about next administrative department. So that would essentially be City Hall. And I, as I would like to improve externally our communications with public, I'd like to improve our internal communication. So right now, we don't have great internal communication. I would like to create a city intranet, only accessible to city employees. Many businesses have this, where you can look up verification, do I have that, what's my rural okay, it looks like. Oh, what is, where is the, where is the employee handbook? Where do I put my, where do I enter my time? So the first time that went just to get a quick bid on doing, and our website could also create it for us an internet. So that's something I'd like to look into. I held one staff meeting, it was awesome. I would like to record these staff meetings, and if we don't actually get together, don't have that many employees, I think it's important for us to get together occasionally. And it's quarterly, that would be amazing, and it's bi-yearly, that would be great. But just so employees get to know each other and can convey key information. I hold staff meeting, the department that staff meetings after every city council meeting, and talk about what the city council has done, what we need to implement. Those are great, I think those are great communication tools. So I'd like to continue to do that, and then I'd like to create a citywide email distribution list. Right now, I want to email everybody in the city, I have to type in everybody's name. So creating that type of thing where we can say, great new city employees, last night, city council passed a force law, five percent, consequently, every increase for all of you. That's the kind of thing I would like to be able to communicate to everybody. We're looking at improving administrative operations, so I'm going to update our employee handbook. How many resources do I have, the person doesn't know that yet, because they're not here yet. But I would like to do that, and we we would love to look into this, we just haven't had time. Is there a software management system that can help them find the time to figure payroll? We're getting improvements in that, but it is a lot more redundant and very stressful, and I'd like to get that off of the plate if possible. Customer service, so we are a service organization, so one of the things we like to do, W City Clerk is going to help us with this, is making our application permits online. Right now, you can go online and get a PDF, but you can't fill it in online. He lets me be able to do that. We're in the process of scanning records to make them digital, so they're easier to search for us, for records requests, and also response times to just general inquiries. You know, what happened in what meeting, did we actually decide that six years ago, did somebody approve that? And then designing a new process to expedite city licenses, whether it's liquor, marijuana, business licenses, and referrals to improve response time on that. We're also doing a little bit more enforcement on business licenses, and I think having the expedited process for people to renew their licenses may make it easier for them to remember to do it. And then decreasing the time the city takes to respond to internal and external request information. And and this is a little more complicated, but we don't really change up our code. We get a lot of questions sometimes from people who want to do something, but they don't understand their code well enough, and then we look at their code, and it's confusing. So we spend a lot of time interpreting our code, helps them decide whether or not they can put up sun, or do they need an permit for something, what can they, but a standard for upon your. So we have a lot of plans to do, and we're grateful to have a kid in here to help us plan a lot of our planning, but we spend a lot of time interpreting them. We've been trying to give citizens answers, so we are going to quarterly put code updates under city council again. They may be simple housekeeping, correcting typos, correcting things, but I want to get it on the agenda, so we keep shipping away better. And then I'd like to evaluate where we must be a ready position in house. We have a lot of legal needs, and we ask a lot of our city attorney. We get a lot of her time, but she has other clients, and our turnaround time is sometimes dependent on her ability to turn those around for us. And Mayor and I talked about this, and we feel like our turnaround time has been greatly improved, we've had a dedicated city attorney. And so I think we agree it's 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 time to piece it up.
We also discussed, we've reached a point in the city where we have a backlog, an extensive backlog of coachings. We, and they're probably more on the horizon, and we can't get to them in a timely manner. You know, without giving a lot of examples, I I know at least one was is three years old, but I would like to accomplish, and we can't get there. So I totally agree with Lori that bringing the city attorney in house would be a really positive.
Not to mention stuff like Gator on its Bruce, would be of great benefit right now, but we don't have that right yet.
Exactly.
Yes, I think that's exactly, you're you're working on that. But we're, you know, kind of drowning, but I like to say, I'm so grateful that we have created the position so we can add, because I can see it, it gave them pressure off for ours. We saw some pressure to release, but we're making progress. I think that there is a label that's in the front for us.
So in both the administrative and and the technical overall goals, I think there's at least three new positions that are being thought of, right? And so I would also ask to, because salary and our overhead, our vehicles, the the fleet, both police officers, or fire department, for our people, our buildings, all those. Hard, fast, base salary and expenses that we are not negotiables, that we can't go and put, we have to figure out what that is and how we build it out. So is there a way that we can add and evaluate how much leverage we have with our current? Budget, and I know it's increasing, our tax point is increasing, so like, we should probably figure out. The evaluation of how much salary can we put out there for these positions? Now, of course, it's going to be a moving target in twenty twenty-four as well, but to make sure that we can actually hire them and not over-budget our salary in expensive for.
I think there's some ways that we are being smarter about how we're spending our money that don't necessarily mean that we won't have to cut. Equipment or other key things that are, you know, necessities for department operations, uniforms, that type of thing. I think there's some thing we've been super smart about that we've been paying for, that we, for example, just getting you all tablets, things like that. But I'll tell you, it's not, a city attorney position is not creating a position. I think that there is a strong likelihood that we can hire someone at the same price we are paying for this whole thing out. So it would, if that happens, it's a wash.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. I'm just saying, as a as a general overview, I mean, shouldn't we look at, like, do an analysis of, I mean, we're increasing salaries potentially, and we're, I'm I'm certain that there's other positions, like you were talking about, Donna meeting perhaps an assistant. Or or somebody to, you know, duplicate those efforts as she's going through. I mean, how much leeway do we have to add in these positions overall with our current budget? Like, can we, can we have a hundred positions? Because I'm certain that we could advertise a hundred, I'm not saying we might probably get fifty percent fill rate, but but at the same time, like, I'm asking if we're, should we not evaluate our budget against the proposed new?
So that's what you're going to do in your budget work sessions, and so the the if you if you think, so what I'd say is, this is the policy decision about, do we agree that these are things that the city should strive for? And you may get to the budget discussion, and you may say, gosh, we've done this analysis, and we can't afford to do a creative communications person this year. So we're not, we we agree that that would be a nice thing to get sometime, but we're not going to do this. Or can we repurpose somebody else in the city for that initiative? So this is the policy side of that, but yeah, I mean, I would say, when we get to the budget discussions, exactly, we will have the initial rounding discussions about what money we have to spend.
So I'll put it in another way, Lori, sorry to cut you off, but can we please develop an organization chart for the budget, for the for the city? What is your chart that you're looking for? I mean, I'm trying to come up with, I don't know what the art chart looks like. I don't know who, who reports to who, how many direct reports you have, if the planning department's going to have an extra person, how many positions are actually budgeted under the fire department, underneath the police department, underneath finance department? I want to know, like, if we're going to think about adding these positions, we have to know what the target we're shooting at.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that's great. So we're ready, we're ready, so we're still young, but I'm not kidding.
We can, we can do that now.
So you can, you could do it in fifteen minutes and say you're having quarterly meetings, but that's on the list too. So I'd ask, if we're doing this with goal setting, write it down. That's what I'm saying.
And one thing I want to talk about to this, Councilor, I think it ties into it, is the concept of FTEs, instead of you get this me. Full-time, this me, you get this me, you can decide how to parse that out. If you, if the burden and designs to make it all part-time employees, so let's say they get five FTE. They want to make that all part-time employees, but they can use that five FTE, full-time for one, right? I I like to do that, but I do think that it is harder for the city to hire part-time employees, because they're looking to live in Level on a part-time salary. But there may be people who are just interested in part-time work, but I I do think we need an organization chart, and we need to look at, what I think is, how, with each. What I think is how, what each firm gets for FTE. Right, so how many FTE are they?
That'll make your job a bit easier.
Let's see what the gaps are.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. I am always present the animal shelter department goals, uh our department head, Caitlin Hacisco is, she is. Uh out for a medical visit this evening, so she had asked me, uh we went over her goals this afternoon. And uh I would, I'll, I can present them because I'm familiar with everything, we have. Biweekly meetings with her and so I pretty much expected a lot of these to be on her list of goals. The first thing is overcrowded at the animal shelter. I hope if if you have a chance to bring animal shelter and you get a chance to do it, they are out of space. So we have lots of ideas, uh it could be that uh it was just a Cadillac version, it's to build a new animal shelter. The VW version is to buy a modular um for office space and working space, so that's what we get to. When we get to the budget discussions, right now, what we, what uh she had on her list is, we've got an overcrowding issue. They need more space, so the goal is to create more space. Uh they reached a point this summer where they were so overcrowded that I was in fact texting people for them to see that they had fostered an animal. Because they literally didn't have the space for all the animals that had been picked up for drop off. Decrease animal length of stay, this is another thing about overcrowding, if you can decrease the length of the stay of an animal in a whole room. Um I frankly think that animal shelter does a great job, animals are usually adopted between two and three weeks. Uh but I think uh the ideas here about pushing out information. Uh so that it is easier for people to come and adopt them, especially increase evening hours. So the animal shelter is not open after work and someone wants to come visit or look at an animal, it's hard to get that animal stopped with the close doors by a block. Uh. Decrease animal interiorization while shelter by increasing progress of volunteers. So uh Caitlin knows she's had enough training knowledge, but know that the longer an animal stays in the shelter, the more behavioral problems they have or. I mean, basically being combined whole place where you don't have a family, the people around you, animals deteriorating. So what we would love to have is more fosters and volunteers, right now we have some fosters, we don't have a very good. List of volunteers right now, I think we have a lot of people uh interested. But a lot of times Caitlin will probably plead for help when she is potentially there by herself or someone's there by herself. And we get any one person to say they can come by hours, so we would um I think. Having the animal shelter have the bandwidth to push out, you know, an open house, train people, get people to come in. Uh I think that's key to us not having to hurt a staff. And then provide low costs, even better than microchips. Uh so this is great, this is brand chasing as well, Caitlin was able to get a brand close on microchipping. But I think as a community service provider, it's really sort of the chicken and the egg to some um with a lot of the vaccines. Uh it can prevent us from seeing animals later with issues and also the microchip definitely means easier for us to get animals back to their owners. Again, getting back to overcrowding. And then the last thing is maintain a minimum of two animal staff members at all times when shelters are falling. I personally think this is a safety issue as well as a burnout issue. Uh and actually do not think it is safe to have one person alone in the shelter. I think we have a lot of dogs that are dropped off, who have behavioral issues. Um they know that if somebody had been bitten by a cat, uh I think that, you know, probably not going to get killed by a cat. But there certainly has to be animals there who do some serious harm and are interested sometimes because they harm like fourteen. So I do think having two people at all times, which are not able always to be written. Uh if we had a situation where people were out sick and we had free planned vacation, then you know, we've got one which delivers. So that's animal shelter department goals, any questions?
No, I do think the goal of expanding with the module makes the most sense, but I mean, we've been talking about it for four or five years, so. I'd be glad to see it happen, we do have somebody in place uh to help make that happen, we're probably going to need to. To very least match that, it's about twenty eight thousand dollars is what's in that account uh from the most estate. Uh but it's part of the cost movement to put a modular in place that that, you know, maybe we'd be off the space.
We spent some time looking into it, Caitlin and I did, and uh we we got stuck because we're looking at accounts and they need uh utility infrastructure. So I don't know, we should switch and make it office and now we don't have to consent in and we don't have to put the cleanings, you know, like poses to clean out the counters. It may be cheaper to do it that way, you're getting a valuation space, we've got quotes. It is going to be more expensive than my value at the app. But I think it's worth it, I mean, like I said, Cadillac version is to, you know, buy access to building or moving building. I don't think that that is an expectation, it's year twenty twenty three, but I do think we need something. So. And monitors will be the station. Okay, I'm not going to use anyone else's house, I mean. Uh all right. Fire.
Thanks, Lori. Hey, America Council, good evening, uh thanks for your time tonight to talk about some goals for twenty twenty three. The number one, and I'm not going to deliver, is I think you talked about retention of employees, uh but we have a lot of experience right now. Within the organization and if we can't retain that and we are going to have a different kind of organization. So I'm looking forward to project sections to really talk about and compare the wage that we can pay employees, so we can keep them. Uh if we. Do not have employees to give the services provided, then all the rest of my goals that I'm even ready to talk about tonight are. So um uh the second thing that I'd like to be able to talk about is programs, there's three that I'm going to focus on this year and it's going to be well in part response. That's uh that's our suppression tactics through training and uh the experience that we get while in employment. And also making sure that this is some equipment or for this next year's products. So that's going to be a really important one for me and the organization, we're going to look at, we're going to analyze the whole program. In twenty twenty three to see what can we do better with that program. Along with that, uh something that's uh that goes along with that to well, that our response is going to be mitigation efforts. Uh while ago, we decided that um. There was some failure in a lot of people's parts to be able to start the mitigation process in Lake County. Now everybody is on board, uh but it is baby steps right now, we're trying to, we're trying to get on the track to be able to get some momentum with. The mitigation efforts here, it's starting this year, as you know, and I've talked to you about it on county road four. We want to go for a uh grant this year, I've been working with the county to try to get some work done on county road four and seventeen. Those are really important areas to mitigate, so if you know anything in those areas, please start talking to them about mitigating. Their problem because we're going to try to widen the limits and get some uh some parts depression or tactics to be able to. Get some mitigation of this stuff.
Chief, I've I've seen the work on county road fours, any any work been done on county road seventeen yet? Okay.
Did you mind the work that was done out there?
Yeah, well, I thought, you know, they have the piles and and now they're getting rid of those, so yeah, look, look. They had cleared out away from the road and under, under the trees, okay.
Where is seventeen?
Uh.
Thank you.
So one of the things that I will talk to county about with that is um hopefully hiring a mitigation technician, that's kind of hoping you here in Lake County. Somebody to facilitate um that big machine to get these efforts done, grant writing, managing grants, getting everybody together. Uh facilitating all of those agencies that need to be worked, so I'm hoping that the county will be on board with that. The third one is going to be apparatus, I know that we've talked about this a lot, uh I want to see what the interest. From local mechanics, it doesn't necessarily need to be with the city or the county, but just in general. If there's a mechanic that's interested or a couple of mechanics here in the county that are interested in becoming technicians. That would be a great room for us when it pertains to um the maintenance that we constantly have to do on. And then it can flow over obviously into the other emergency vehicles, now they can have a point of contact. With an agency that takes care of losing vehicles. I know we've worked on this in the past a couple of different times, uh like there was trouble and everything, um that wasn't successful, but we want to have a successful program. That's even if we have to get some lift systems and trying to get some uh structure down at the station two. Uh to try to have a bay where we can do some maintenance and maybe that's the end goal of trying to get some maintenance. Uh facilities, station two, the goal is to get it in fully operational. With two chiefs, uh two ambulance personnel and three rescue firefighters initially. And then uh try to get the ammo used in place for use because of uh search and rescue of you and their ambulance, how it works ourselves, so we need to. Play nice in that facility and we want to be able to make sure that we're calling along. Everybody knows what to do and their responsibilities and they're cleaning up the bay and areas that need to be. How long is the facility? Uh station one has continuous maintenance, it's an old, old building, uh one of the goals is just to try to make some access points this year to the infrastructure. Of the building to keep out the heights and all of that and we got a bunch of patches and holes all over our. Our bay area, just want to take all of that out and expose that and then just have access points to the to those areas, that's the number one thing I thought about. Stations one and possibly looking at the front and the back door because they only work like three quarters of the time. Uh the department itself, my goal is to revamp and overall all of our standard operating procedures, one through nine hundred. So uh the last time I did it was in twenty thirteen and things have changed since then, so. Uh we need to get where I don't think those. We'll have an apparatus consultant come in um in January, uh we we talked about May and that's Brian Brown. Here at a presentation, I'm getting with Spartan, he'll be here in May to kind of go into the fleet and our operating procedures with our. Second three hundred. And then ISO procedure, we've already reached out to ISO to try to get analysis done on Red Bull and Lake County. Uh to see if we can, whether we're going to sustain at the current ISO rating, that's an insurance rating that insurance is in your property. Or if we can lower that, I think that we might be able to lower it in the south. Anywhere five miles from that, from that new station.
Will they lower in sections or districts?
It'll be five miles.
Would it be overall?
Road by.
No, I understand, but I mean, are are those people on the same ISO rating as the people in Red Bull currently? And so could their ISO rating be raised?
Lower.
Lower, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, and that's the goal. Anybody within five miles of that because of the water source and and the station. So that would be good, uh and then training, um head water training facility, we want to continue to grow that out, but the main goal this year is to. Do with the other emergency agencies to see how they can reach that training facility for their disciplines. Uh I think it's really important now that we've got enough people out out there, that we can start welcoming the other agencies and say, hey, come on in here. Have fun and enjoy what you're doing in your profession and training. And uh so that's, that's one of my goals and also to have an emotional place for that and then um. And then continue that partnership with C and C, uh we are becoming the hub of the fire science program. On this side, uh we, there'll be another one over in department now, like all that, take care of the western stall, but we are the hub now. For this general area, so the conversations have started about what can we do about permanent permanent building out there? And which I need to come to council with because it is city property, what does that look like, is that something we want to do? Uh to build base space out there, start getting compressors in there, extractors, all of those types of things and see if we wanted to have a. A solid training facility, C and C is on board, we have to go through the permitting process of that, um and that's kind of goal that we agree. So that's all I have for tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Give me last.
What's that?
Give me last.
I I do have a question, you talk about two chiefs in in uh in station two, explain that to me and who that might be.
So I'm going to move my office down there and um chief mechanic is going to be down there as well. His office is upstairs, mine is downstairs and then chief will move into my office here because he thinks there are a lot of uh downtown city.
Business.
Can you scroll up to the wildland or the base goal?
So wildland fire response?
Yeah. There was apparatus, but then there was also.
Mitigation.
Uh wildland.
Wildland.
Mitigation coordinator, did I hear that?
Yeah, so it's not on there, I just said it out, okay, so. A law and coordinator.
Yeah.
It's kind of what envision chief in county has done, like hired somebody specifically to take care of mitigation efforts. Uh they have Sidney Williams, but they also hire somebody to facilitate. All of the relationships to get those bodies done, right, the grants and they send out uh press releases to the community.
Understood, I I I don't see it, can we add it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I think that's important to, uh if that's truly a goal and I mean, I think that the work out and county road four and seventeen is. Baby steps, right, I mean, anybody that's been on a wildland fire before knows that. If that fire is moving. Any faster than a ground fire, that mitigation effort is not going to do anything for either of those, it's pretty much being able to control like. A chain dragging along the road that started to get into the the wildlands and then you're able to stop it. It's truly not like, I mean, it's a good start, but like I think that to your point, having a mitigation coordinator that works with. Getting more grants, getting more of those efforts that are more continuous, right, where it's a contiguous of defense, working with. All of the private property zones out there so then it can, it's not, it's cross boundary, so it's not just along areas that perhaps we have. Ability to move through county, but it's uh there's, it's it's throughout the community, if if those folks want to join in, right? I mean, I think that that wildland mitigation coordinator is a key component to it, to get from baby steps to. Where envision chief counties are at or Eagle County with their wildland fire mitigation coordinator over there, um it's, that's what. I wanted to say, if we could add that to a goal and keep moving that forward, that's a great goal to have.
Yeah, it really is, and I agree that you said that, they are currently right now working on county property in behind community field and Newmont property just behind that. And they'll go down county road twenty six and then next year they'll they'll tackle some mitigation efforts at C and C. So it's a good start.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Great.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to plan, but but Caitlin, this is like your first week and a half, you're. Yeah.
Very fresh.
So I I when we were putting this process together, I asked Caitlin to be one to be included in that, and I was very pleased that you did and so. Uh we're, I think your question was, do you have a, you know, already jobs, make a goals and I think it's a lot, so.
So take it easy, no, I'm not. And thanks, so first, I'd like to use this opportunity to say thank you for creating my position, I'm absolutely thrilled to be here. Uh be a part of this community and uh you were, you may get some things done. Uh so yeah, speaking of uh getting things done, you have a list in front of you of of planning goals, a lot of this is really just about. Building a foundation, building a solid foundation for uh for a planning firm, and when I say planning firm, I mean me. Um so as as Lori mentioned, this is my. Um, so as, as Laura mentioned, this is my second week, uh, but I am, I want to take a stab at some things we're looking forward to next year. Uh, goal one is, this is all about timely customer service. Um, as I understand it, it's applications and build applications that is slipped through the cracks. And uh, we certainly don't have that notification to the planning department and uh we do want to be a, you know, uh, you know, a building friendly community. Uh, when people aren't complaining about the, the processes, we are going through the right processes. Uh, so for both zoning and subdivision applications, which is really the, the meat majority of everything that comes through the whole area in terms of development review. We do want to adopt reasonable maximum timeframes. Uh, so for example, someone's coming through the conditional youth permanent application, it has to go through the planning commission and ultimately to use the town council. Uh, what is that time frame? Six weeks and seven weeks, uh, and then it was all different process and all the things that happen, happen. Uh, and uh, within, within that, kind of that sub-goal is uh, we want to um, adopt time, adopt timelines for both application completeness review. And also just the actual process and the application. Uh, and then finally, within our goal is actually reviewing and processing those, those applications within those timeframes for next year. Uh, goal two is all about inspections and compliance. Uh, so for both new developments and existing approved developments that are current in their construction, uh, it's all about monitoring and inspecting those projects. Uh, and this would include larger phase developments uh here in town. Uh, one, one example that, you know, how, how this would actually work is for example, for a larger phase development, there is a subdivision improvement agreement that's been entered into. Uh, between the city and town council and developer. Uh, there are certain uh checkpoints, certain timeframes within, within those agreements that the developer is obligated. Uh, to install the, the public improvements, that could be the streets, the sidewalks and all those things and all those exactly constructed to city standards. So it's my job to, to inspect those or bring on the consultants that are necessary to inspect those public improvements. Uh, and make sure that those city standards, they are constructed within the agreed upon timeframes. Goal three is all about relationships. Of course, I am new, so there are a lot of relationships to, uh, to build, including with you here tonight. Um, so maintaining, establishing, growing uh those relationships. Uh, that's within our organization, within our, uh, organizations of, uh, community partners, et cetera. Uh, developing relationships, um, so that we can uh have relationships, have those organizations as a resource. Uh, so I'd like to, you know, some examples of how, like to do that would be attending some uh important regular meetings that are happening here in the community, including the housing coalition's. Policy advisory team, uh, so uh, but, but I attended my first meeting there and I attended regularly ten of those as well. Um, also working with uh county staff, for example, on uh development uh referrals and for projects that are coming through in the county. Uh, that they are submitted to us for, for those for promise that might have um town, or sorry, city impacts. Say, I say town, because I was working through the town record, so you can catch me saying town law. Uh, might have city impact, but not necessarily within the city, we provide referrals on those. Uh, goal four, kind of closely related to goal three, uh, is providing support. So supporting those, uh, those community party uh partners and also community priors. Being a resource for those, those partners. So for example, um, we want to, I want to provide efficient entitlement processing. Uh, and permitting review for those high priority uh projects. Uh, like the community justice center and then any other affordable housing uh projects that we have, um, power developments that we have in the works that will come from us next year. I'll also be attending, regularly attending the uh, the meetings of the uh, the executive committee for the community justice center. Uh, those are, you know, it's high priority projects in the community, I'll be a part of those meetings. And then lastly, uh, code updates, uh, this is um something that will be ongoing every, every year. Um, and even the ranger this year, uh, that'll be an important part of our, what we're doing for twenty twenty three. Uh, you know, the city has already adopted long range plans that, that you've adopted in the past few years and even more than the past few years. Uh, I want to read those, understand those and, and then uh go through the code, identify and evaluate those opportunities. For, for code updates that really help support those plans that you've already developed. Uh, so uh, what this looks like is I'll be uh maintaining a self spreadsheet list of all of those updates as they, as I start to work with the code. Lots of those will be trial and errors, we receive development permanent applications and we're processing those. And we realize, let's say, okay, hey, there's something here that is not consistent or doesn't work. Uh, put that on the list and bring that to you in those quarterly updates that uh Laura mentioned earlier. Uh, that's it for me, I'm happy to take any questions. Again, thank you for, for having me here.
If I have any questions, I'm going to call Max last.
Yeah.
Go back to the brother.
Yeah, that's good.
I do have a couple. Have you seen the recommendations from the policy advisory team for coachings?
I have, but I skipped the rhythm.
Okay, just, just curious whether you've gotten that far, that's all.
I feel that was in my.
You said, okay. Uh, but, but I, I think that's something that's important. Um, the justice center, what entitlements are forthcoming, wh-what's on our plate for entitlements for the justice center land?
My understanding is that will be a site plan review and work, and then so that will be going through, going through planning commission, hopefully the town council. Uh, one of the things that I have to do is go through the code and understand if there's any kind of the, uh, what, what exemptions there are in terms of the process for a community project. Um, and other jurisdictions where I've worked and you do have those exemptions, I don't know if those are in the code. But my, my understanding will be at least a, a site plan review, which will require a minimum of one public here in front of planning commission and town council.
But I've also talked about the actual zoning of that land, does it need to change or is it okay the way it is now? I, I don't know the answer to that.
That was on my list for today.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's all right. I was gonna hope you would say that.
Great question, that's the first, first thing I'll be looking at.
I love the idea that you're going to be looking at code, code changes and, you know, the code was implemented in the eighties, nobody knows where it came from. Uh, we suspect it was a plug and play from another bigger city. And it doesn't really fit Ledville very well, um, so I, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that. Because I think it's, it's, it's going to be an ongoing effort uh to, to try and, you know, you know, change our code. Consistently, yeah.
So for goals three specifically, do you have a, do you feel like you have a good idea of what organizations are doing? What, or like a big direction towards uh who to ask? Because I know it can be a lot, especially because a lot of it lives in different organizations and. Different parts of the same organization that even themselves, they don't really have a good grasp of all that, right?
I, I, I believe I'm very quickly learning uh those, those, uh, I think. Kind of reinforcing that disposition was much needed just the first week that I was here. I had a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of people just dropping in and saying, I really need an appointment with you, there's something I need to talk to you about, about my organization, so. Uh, so I'm quickly learning that Laura is helping out, connecting with um everybody that I need to connect with, so. And I'm trying to remember all names. But yeah, to answer your question, yes, I feel like.
Yes, do you have something?
Yeah, um. I'm not giving my whole. Um, the rail yards, I'm sure you're overwhelmed by that, but I believe we're in a two-year bond. To put, to put up a bond. To make sure that the infrastructure was correct and need to, I mean, I think.
Do, do inspections on the infrastructure, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I believe.
Extremely high priority. And uh, and one of the things that I will be doing is uh working with third-party consultants. Uh, to engage with an engineer to come in and inspect those things that I as a city planner am not qualified to inspect. Um, but, but I can oversee the whole process and ensure that the engineer is telling me what, what needs uh requirements, what does not. And I can uh work with the developer and ensure those are done before those checkpoints are laid out in the S and A.
And, and to, to that point, actually, that's a good one is that when Chayton started, uh, I explained there are several things that are tougher. Getting a handle on rail, so he has a subdivision improvement agreement. And so he's going through that and working to make sure that as far as what the city is obligated to do, we're following up and. Make sure the developers that they obligated to, you know, for the city's concern. So that policy advisory team, um, recommendations, community justice center. And I think those were the main things I said, get out of speed as quickly as you can.
There's one more that's coming down the pipeline and you were in the meeting, the table uses and the revision of the table uses is, is about to come before city council. And I'm glad Chayton's going to be here to, to have a, a look at that and see frankly, does he agree with what's been recommended? So I don't know the answer to that, not putting you on the spot, but uh, when it comes to the forums, your opinion will be important to that.
And I'd like to make notes for the future ones that may come down to you as well, um, just to make sure that there's a. Communication lines between organizations that have those plans and uh city, because they involve the city or hopefully. Specifically with city, with access code.
Yeah, I, I, my, my door is always open, so any of these, these uh. Uh, goals, bring up ideas for you, uh, for me, uh, in the next few months or next year, please uh feel free to jot me and direct me with any thoughts.
Anybody else?
I just have one, uh, and then I just have a question for you, Lori, perhaps, is. Uh, when it comes to the health, safety and welfare of the public and occupants of new development through site monitoring and inspections. Uh, who does it fall on? That, that's for, and you have some examples in there. And I'm thinking about uh. All of this rain that we've had and some of the construction that's been going on with the uh Pine Street, which isn't necessarily a development, but it's. Somebody has received a permit for putting in sewer lines. Is that going to be under your purview of making sure that they're. Abiding by the best management practices out there as they're putting things back together? I mean, I'm thinking about when Parkville Water just decides to. Do something on the street and instead of putting a hot hatch, you just cover it with gravel and cut there and go, right? And then we don't ever have another hot hatch, you know, they're, they're out there today, right? And so how do we, who's responsible? That's the question in that for that type of.
So yes, uh, so your, your example on that would be the, the hot hatch is going to be the streets. The, the subdivision improvement agreements and the development agreements, any of the annexation agreements, that's planning. If it's uh, something's not on the code, that's the county building department. So we, it depends because it sounds like if there can be a development, it could be, though, all three of those entities could be. Potentially the developer doesn't do something, it could be any of those entities that says. You need your ramp and stuff.
Okay, so it's, it, okay. And then I guess, and this is just a, an aside to, is when we have. Agreements or we're going out for requests or proposals, for example, paving. Is that in your wheelhouse? I know it's not in your wheelhouse, but who's responsible for going out and getting bids and, and going through that?
Our new streets department manager, who is going to start off in thirteen.
Okay.
So yeah, this is why, you know, this is the beauty of being able to, you know, hire and have these positions built and that. A lot of that stuff has fallen to the mayor and he has been gracious to be doing it, but that would be going off of that on paving.
Okay.
So it is a street department supervising, he has to go out for those bids.
Pretty big deal.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
Typically, the thing would fall within the planning department's purview and comes into review for, for public safety, where if you're all there, those sort of things are. Things that are within private property that um involve private property development or those connections out to the, something in the right way. Or anything that's within the right ways, as we've been talking about, that, something that's new that's coming online, that we're developers building and it's being dedicated to the city.
Okay, and so I guess, I'm sorry about this, I'm just trying to figure out how it all works. We'll take the railroad guys for example, let's say it was built on a real steep hill, right? And they don't have any raindrop action, right? And we get a big dump of rain and all of that dirt and slag just goes into and goes down through the sewers and, and just makes a big mess. Who is that? And you, like, who, who's responsible to say to the developers? You didn't put, you didn't put up all those soap fences as such, and now we're going to charge you a fine for making our people come out and clean up your mess.
And it really goes back to what is, what is in the code and then you know how strong the code is. I, I don't know, um, if, you know, if there are certain control ordinances within the, within zoning regulations, I'll have to look into that in minutes and know that I'll make this going through these code updates. Uh, but I guess it's in there, if you know, if, if there's a, a section of code that said that you're responsible for. For prohibiting settlement from leaving your property through appropriate road control and mess management practices. Both for the, the uh existing use of property and a new development, uh, then yes, we can, we're planning a program to hold into it.
Okay, because I mean, I'm just thinking about what I went to summer, second street up there. People wide open road, people's homes getting flooded with construction material. Uh, if it isn't in the code, I think perhaps that could be a goal for research into the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we are uh over halfway through the reports and just wanted to check in and see if anyone wants to take a break. We have left, we have uh lease and streets. And we are at seven twenty-five.
Those.
How many? Go on. Okay, and I also wanted to say, yeah, if there's anything you, if we're on track or off track with this, you've got many municipalities who involves that. Uh, please feel free to check in.
Well, I'm taking notes and take that in. We're probably about five minutes to talk about, once or twice, I think. Hopefully we're going.
That's great. Okay, we'll, we'll make sure to see you soon. All right. Please, you know.
Fifteen goals, but I. And win with them, the two, two, the two, the biggest ones. Um, one or one is to provide animal control services for the, for the city. Um, and most likely the county. Uh, specific, specifically, I'd like to hire up a new community service officer too. Whose primary duty is one of the animal control. Within the city, in addition to the other duties that CSO do. Uh, we would measure the effectiveness of this program by tracking the fault of service. Nature of those calls, number of those calls, where are these problems. Uh, happening and the uh success of prosecuting people that are violating these animal control codes. Uh, probably the most, the most challenging aspect of this or. Piece of this is to find the right person for this job. It's going to be a managing job that's going to involve interfacing with a lot of people that are very hostile. Angry at times and uh threatening as well as their angry, threatening, hostile dogs. And so uh when we advertise this and we're very frantic about the, the nature of the job and specific about duties. Uh, to hopefully get somebody that really wants to do this, this is a job, we need to have somebody that wants to do this job. Uh, and has the interpersonal skills and the, the strength of character to, to handle a onslaught of. Anger and complaints, things they will probably get them. So. I'd like to start the process of, of uh I identifying and recruiting somebody in this position uh in September. The goal of getting them on board maybe in October. And get their uh preliminary CSO two training completed by the end of the year. And then schedule the certifications for the animal control piece in uh early twenty twenty-three. Uh, Caitlin, Will Scarel is going to help me identify the. Specific classes and trainings this person need for this job. And uh, hopefully we can get this person on board and fully trained. Um, by late first quarter, second quarter, twenty-two, three, that's the goal. Uh, the second goal is to implement a crime data tracking analysis and mapping programs, it's been long been a goal of mine. We just don't have the bandwidth right now to, to, uh, to get this going, but um. Next year, I'd like to identify somebody, perhaps a part-time employee that can come in and help us with this. Uh, identifying a product that's going to work for us. And use this as a tool for, for several things, to measure the effectiveness of our crimes. Crime suppression efforts to understand the nature of criminal activity within the community. Uh, I mean, where is it occurring? Time of day, or what types of crimes and the, the frequency of these offenses. And use this as a tool to uh provide a more accurate, specific police and services within the community. Uh, this is something that uh. Police departments, large, small, across the land do, so we're not reinventing the wheel, there's a lot of good stuff out there already. We just need to identify. We just need to identify what's gonna work for us and and get going with this as part of this. Um, and this kind of dovetails with the improvement of the city. Uh, website would be to publish this information to the extent we can, so people can go on a website and see a map of city and or county. And just see exactly where things are happening, what's 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 taking place. Um, I think the more information that we can provide the public uh is gonna be better. Uh, and then it'll also help, hopefully people will look at this information, say, you know, there's a lot of auto thefts in my area, maybe I'll look out for this. And and pay close attention to suspicious people and things that sort of. But I think right right now, we we and I, I said, we must share as partners in the same, but we're in our flying line. We we do not uh track um calls for service and criminal activity. And so we're just out there kind of just riding around. Uh, not knowing where things are taking place and where to take the place. And then the other thing is, if if we identify about certain areas or certain people that have that are having problems. We'd be using data to address and pause of of this, like, if we have a, you know, rash of. Domestic violence cases in a particular area, then we can work with our uh community service partners. And maybe provide some some benefit measures. Uh, that would include the use of police to intervene and address these issues. Most of it, most of the substance abuse, spouse abuse, child abuse, so there's usually some underlying parts. And uh identifying that and providing that information to groups like wraparound. Full circle, build generation and. So this uh will make our um public safety efforts more more uh efficient and more effective. So that's the, those are my two main goals for twenty twenty three amongst.
Any questions for the chief?
Uh, I have one, um. Kind of tagging along to what you said about connecting to those organizations. I think it's worth saying that that might be a role in itself to have a more structured. Connection to these organizations, um, which is something that the organizations ourselves or have been working on. Uh, full circle and other service providing organizations to have better referral systems to uh certain ways. Not like the city council's table at some point, but point being, I think it's. Uh, you're correct, uh, fully correct on the point of. Uh, we should be preventative about some of these parts before it gets to a situation where we want police to respond. Um, and not only is that good for people as humans, but also saves us a lot of money from. Instead of sending people to respond to something that could have been prevented um through services that we may already have offered. Um, just getting those people connected ahead of time. So I'd I'd like to highlight that as a potential, it's only goal, um, having that specific build out for these organizations.
Yeah, if you look at, you look at the nature of of criminal criminal behavior, criminal activity, there's always some root cause. Right, it could be, it could be poverty, substance abuse. Right, there, you know, there's all these different things that that usually are associated with criminal activity. And I think it's it's more effective. Public safety is more effective when we address, address and identify the root cause of the dysfunction. As opposed to just being reactive and responding to call of service after the fact, after these things happen. So if we can identify that, you know, if there's certain family or certain groups of people that have. Some some sort of social dysfunction, it's oftentimes people who are affected. To have these other social service organizations come in. Uh, and provide it with with counseling or financial assistance, whatever it might be. Uh, because we, we, we nine times out of ten, we may call app back. And walk into these situations that have been centering for months and years on on in. And calling us is just a mandate that's supposed to solve solve underlying problem, the call causes the uh, the ASO.
I have a quick question, uh, the um, the program that you referred to that would that helped you with data tracking analysis. Is that an addendum to Eforce? I guess I'm surprised Eforce doesn't already do that.
Yeah, it would be separate from Eforce.
Okay.
Uh, one of the problems with Eforce as it stands now is that uh dispatch and the county have. Greater access to things in there than we do. Um, and what I, what I'm envisioning is is any more than what Eforce. Can provide, and we, we, I think if we can find somebody within the community that has uh these types of skills. Uh, they don't have to necessarily do this full-time, but if we can bring them in like on a monthly basis to. To take a look at the data, you know, and draw out what we're looking for and then update that information on the website. I think that would be an effective way to get it done.
Any other questions for the chief? Dave, you've been awfully quiet up there. Okay, no problem.
And Chris, Chris Lloyd on the on the animal control pieces. Uh, willing to assist us with um grant, grant funds and grant funding to the training costs for this person. Um, so that would be helpful.
All right, so we're down to the last one, streets department, I am gonna present the streets department goals. Uh, the great news is next year are not me presenting these, we've hired a streets firm manager, Tony Medina is going to be our team. Uh, Streets Firm is very excited about that, I'm very excited about it, we have needed to have good leadership in that department. Jim has been gracious to come, Jim Tyre has been gracious to come back and help us, he does actually want to retire. Uh, and this is gonna work great, he's gonna be training coming uh. You know, up until maybe the snow start lining. Uh, but this is starting to work great, and unfortunately, Tony's not gonna start work with us until September uh thirty. He, so uh the mayor and I and Jim and other members of the streets department, Trevor and Marvin met, compared these goals. And so I am here to present them, so really, uh, streets, you've got kind of, you can see, snow, winter, picking in the summer, so snow removal. Um, it's pretty simple, mid reported, cleaned by six and clear by sixteen, entire city gravely, this is the goal. We we know the goals are not always achievable, but this is the goal. And then in between hauling the snow away as much as possible, of course, you can't haul the snow away and so again, so you're back to number one. Clearing by sixteen, uh, and then we wanna update the snow guide, which is distributed to the public around October. So it's time to take a look at that and updating that. Okay, for the summer, we'll talk a little bit about this, uh, you know. And I want this meeting to be a bigger discussion next goal setting for twenty twenty four. But what we have is a system where we set aside some money and then we figure out how many streets we can do with that. Okay, that's one way to approach it. But a lot of our speed, a lot of our speed needs to be worked, so. This this is a saying, this is a goal, how many, how many blocks do we wanna do? And then the reverse, how much money is that gonna cost? If we look at shipping away at one mile streets a year, ten blocks, it's gonna take us a little time. But it's better than the system we're at right now, which is, I think we're gonna end up with three blocks, four blocks.
Uh, it'll be more than that this year, but it's also the possible we have, so that's a whole other conversation.
So the way we've done it this year is we set aside money. But we're gonna repay more blocks, so we're gonna go over the money and set aside, so I think it's better to to say, this is how much we wanna chip off every year. Uh, I would like to have a discussion at some point if we have a better system of doing that. And whether or not we just need to fight forward and bond to be able to do that, but that is part of the capital improvement. Plan, which we don't have this year, which I would like to have on for twenty twenty four. Uh, we wanna require utilities to use flow bill or other equivalents, uh, I've gotten a good education about this. The cuts that occur in our pavement, so the mayor pointed out some of our streets aren't in that bad of shape, except for where the plexus is made. And they're basically just reverse V buffs, they're just dips in the road. So we'd like to require the utilities to use flow bill so that we don't have that. Reverse V not problem on all of our streets. What I think we need to do is max getting two or three fiber plants. Is we really need to sit down and do an interim condition of our streets and sit down with the other folks who dig up our streets. Sanitation visitor, car to liar, visitor to sell, and sit down and figure out a three fiber. I I plans and plans are like goals, we can evaluate them, they need to be changed, there may be things that are different. But it's September and we have not done any repaving in part because. Utilities have not finished their work. So we need a better, we need a better plan, so we 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 plan ten blocks, but we can't even get to one because of the planning. With the other entities, utilities. So I think sitting down and doing current conditions streets and saying, these are current conditions, these might be better, you know, we these might last another couple of weeks. But these are critical condition and then sitting down with our other partners, putting together a plan for getting those groupings. So sidewalks and public spaces. So by boat, the city is responsible for maintenance sidewalks. Um, but we are, we do do some things, so we do curb painting, uh, as you saw there is yellow curb painting. Uh, I think we we talked about it, we should be prepared to be prepared to paint everywhere, we may not need it. Um, but it's weather dependent, it's also dependent on how many times people crash into the curb and um make it go away. As you can see, some of the yellow already is black, it's. People crashed into it, but anyway, we should be prepared to paint. And shuttling critical areas, municipal areas, we do have an obligation as the city to, in the business district. Shovel our sidewalks in front of our municipal buildings, so in the in the retail corridor. So that means city hall, uh, other taper, um, opera house, those those things. We also have an obligation to maintain the parks, both reference, the new parkland across the street and other municipal spaces. Um, we have done more groundkeeping this year, we have had women helping us with meeting, those little common workshop areas. Um, but sort of that, that's our responsibility. And then they need to represent the city well. Uh, so I have to park, if there's a big weekend and the bathroom is a disaster, that reflects on the city. I'd like to create them as far as drainage, create a drainage improvement plan. Uh, so that we know areas that are in critical need of improvement. And then additional plan, whenever we're repainting a street, we should look and see if there's any corner that needs to be redone well enough for a street. I think that's just sense. Um, and then capital improvements, and I wanted to touch on this because I do think we need a capital plan citywide. Uh, but specifically with regard to Streets Firm, we have some new equipment we're storing outside. That's not, I do, and that's not what we want, we don't want to have our brand new or relatively new equipment. Uh, being exposed to winter weather and potentially decreasing the longevity of our equipment. So I think that we need to increase the availability of materials for the streets department, including uh sand, patching, paving material. So right now, if we go pick up asphalt, we have to roll it, store it in a dump truck until we use it. So that doesn't make that, that for us has to be a live good coordination of time, because when we're gonna be dead. Uh, I, we're storing our sand right now at C, at C dot Slinders, store it in, but it would be a lot more efficient if we had it. Where we need it, not just where we can get space to store it. So that goes into, you know, potentially. Does, what does that look like, you know, some type of new facility or some type of structure for the um, the streets department? And then the last thing is increasing the safety and efficiency of the city lighting, so that's also streets. We have sixty-three poles and uh, the mayor has uh been looking into. What it would cost to upgrade those, work on those, they are, uh, they kind of a. Uh, what do we wanna say, a little bit of a worry for us about the electrical issues that we've had with some of them and wish we had work fixing them right now. But it would be, um, it would be great to in in operating the infrastructure on those and include solar and wifi if there's a possibility. That's the kind of stuff, go back to the great gray version, we can chase some money for that house. So, um, you know, if we can get grants to increase the safety and efficiency and replace all the city light poles, that would be nice. Any questions on the streets, don't even do her, because I don't think this is. Yeah, Dana.
Hi, yes, I I figured out my computer is not a touchscreen, so I found out how to unmute myself. Um, my quick question, are those sixty-three poles or those just the ones down on Harrison, or are we talking about? Some of the other Excel polls that extend into the residential areas? Okay, thank you.
Some of the other ones are who's Excel, Excel, okay, because there's. Because you probably know quite a few that just don't work.
We had that conversation.
You are addressing, going to address that immediately.
All right, cool, exactly.
They replaced all those lights three or four years ago with LEDs. Uh, but you're right, now you have a much better day.
Yeah, I mean, I I love walking at night, that bothered me, but I do know people who do genuinely feel. Uh, bothered by not having adequate lighting to be able to walk around, especially in our lovely, lovely sidewalk conditions.
Yeah. Great segue, Christian. Uh, is there a way in that such sidewalk slash public spaces, I know it's not our responsibility for maintenance. And there are some terrible sidewalks, and I keep going to the Lifetime Fitness Corner across my bills. They have a multimillion dollar publicly traded corporation with sand and broken sidewalk on a direct corner. On Harrison, that is unacceptable. For somebody to not invest into a community that they make millions of dollars on every single year. And uh, and I think we need to work with. Especially those type of people that bring a lot of, you know, economy, of course, I mean, I think we would be fine without the. The event, to be perfectly honest these days, but of course, it's part of our history, I'm not gonna change that, I'm just saying. Can we work with, if it's not our responsibility, we need to work with the people whose responsibility is. And that to me, we have to focus on that first, at least half block off Harrison. Uh, to make sure people can get down a sidewalk to a business. Uh, I mean, I, as much as we did that work up on Poplar, Tenth and Malon, because there's a lot of. Those community homeowners, and I think it was a lot of dings by our, you know, by C dot files or whatever that smashed it down. Uh, that needs to be addressed and and I I know it's just one corner, but I mean, if there's any corner. That needs several, I mean, you can probably name a hundred more, right, and that's fine, I'll 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 defer to your hundred, but that's my number one corner. Uh, just because. It's absolutely insane, it's not completed right now.
I mean, I guess on that point, I also wanted to ask about um putting other organizations accountable. Um, specifically with like the roads and the road conditions they leave them in, I mean, this is the first time that. Some other organization that's sticking to our streets end up ruining the streets and maybe just having to be paid for them. So I think having some type of ordinance or something to hold those organizations accountable for ruining perfectly defined streets. Some of them aren't perfectly fine, obviously, but um ruining our streets and making it undrivable and unparkable. Um, would be great because it's giving this wild, because they're already in bad condition and then you did. What you packed were done, it's just not great for a lot of local vehicles, um.
Well, to to your point, and uh, you know, this has been a sixty-year issue.
Yeah.
Now, these streets were first paved in the early sixties and uh, and and so. They would still be in reasonably decent shape, except for all the street cuts. And that, the reason for that is that they dig down nine feet, but then they don't compact the soil. Because that's, that's the problem, is there not, it gets required in the permitting process, compaction in eighteen inch lifts. You know, every eighteen inches they have to do a compaction testing, test, we know they're not doing it. So hence, what Lori was talking about is we wanna require, they 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 pushed back for years. Against flow bill, because it does quadruple the cost of bill. But at this point, if we're gonna start paving streets and someone's gonna cut into our street, they need to flow bill. Because flow bill won't save like like all these, so I mean, I think you make an excellent point. Uh, and that's the solution, a whole solution, frankly, that we can come up with. I, I wanted to say something about bonding. Lori brought this up. It's something, it's been on my mind for a long time. When I talk with other mayors. Um, they, they, they are envious of and can't believe we're a city with no debt. That's great. But I'm not sure it's the best way to do business. Again, talking to some of these mayors, that's how cities get things done, is they bond against projects. Um, I've never loved the idea of it, but the time may have come. Where we should be giving that some thought. I'll leave that alone for now, because that's a, there's another rabbit hole we can go down.
I think that's a perfectly suitable for a lot of the specialty housing projects we've been thinking about.
Okay, any other questions on street department?
One more, and it might not be officially your twenty-three, Lori, or maybe something about this year twenty-one. Or four, twenty-four, not going backwards, alright? Uh, has the street department's. Base of operation on Sixth Street beyond its useful lifespan? I mean, we're, is it, is it, I mean, how mu- I'm just thinking, how many municipalities have a street department with a, a majority of their equipment? A half block off the main street? I would think that that, that, that. We're, we're, we're starting to figure out that that might not be the right thing, especially with what you're talking about. Adding storage for sand and for, I mean, is there a way to find a parcel, purchase land? That would make it for a better street department location and then remove that and sell that parcel. To get it back or something like that. I don't know what the answer is, but like, like I said, it's not in the twenty-three goals, but. When do we look at actually going down to this department's needs?
Yeah. The answer is soon. The, the issue is they have our own airspace. So the question is, do we acquire space adjacent to the current shop? Or additional storage and so storage equipment and storage materials, that, that one option. The other option is to, to do what you suggested, is get a different piece of land and just. Move everything to a, a one, one piece of land. So if we get from a impromptu street or nearby, then turn it off possibly. Um, is there, you know, maybe we move everything up to where the cash is? And then the other two I was saying is, we shouldn't just think in. Uh, compartments, because we just said the animal shelters have our own airspace. I mean, we, we're going to build a building, we're going to build it, oh, we're going to do a building, and then we're going to do a building, that's expensive. What if we, what if we just say, okay, we need more operations, we're going to build a city operations boat. And it's going to have this metal star show person equipment, it's going to have this three sided thing for sand, and then it's going to have this for animal shelter. This for something else, because cheaper to build one bigger building than multiple smaller buildings. So. That's the capital of original plan that I want. I mean, just, there's not enough hours in a day, that's the thing we need to think about. But exactly, yep. Alright, so any other questions? If not, Dana's a little tense.
Alright. Um, thank you very much for having me here, Mayor, Council. Again, my name is Dana Leback, always is pronounced, and I'm Dana from Dover. Um, I don't know how many of you really know about the Department of Local Affairs. Um, I would recommend sometimes you go through this process. We will be getting a new leader manager, who's got Christie Dill, who has left to work for Solita. Um, we will be getting a new director, who's going to disturb the Friday down in Alamosa. Um, but I would like to come back up with that person and do the introduction as well as talk to you about what the focus is, don't get rid of it. Uh, that's usually about eighteen, twenty minute minimum presentation. And I'm rolling into about thirty seconds if I can. We're known for nothing. Uh, we got last month, we give out, last year we gave out somewhere on seven million dollars throughout the state. Um, it's not all simple, it's not all pain, it's not just for whatever you want to spend it on. A lot of housing money, a lot of water money, a lot of sewage money. What, what we really do though, more than that, is work with jurisdictions to help them succeed. Um, I agree with you, the big regional managers around the state. Um, we all have local government backgrounds, I've been a city manager, deputy county manager, county finance director, city budget manager. And current administrative, development service administrator. We all have similar background, extensive local government background. We believe that government is good by local government. Your handle, it's your priorities, we don't set it, we help, we try to figure out how to get stuff done. A lot of this funding, um, but a lot of it is technical advice, you know? For instance, my, my technical advisory task is business stability. So it's about budgeting, bringing the city forward or the town forward. In their budgeting process, in the strategic planning process, I, I thought it was interesting, looking at your website. In two thousand and eighteen, you had a strategic, like a called strategic plan process, you have a more planning process. And one of your priorities was animal shelters, and animal shelter space. So it's made the shelters don't change over five years. Um, but the real reason.
Close enough, yeah.
Dana from Dover, thank you, Dana. You raised a great point, that there's the goal, objectives, visions. I usually go through the town about three sessions, computer plan. Problem, and it includes the citizens and all the staff and the council, the electives. It's really about, what do you want your city to be? Once you identify that vision, um, what are the driving kind of objectives and from that, and come up with a work plan every year. Then you put your budget into that work plan of what has to happen. You, you don't have time for that huge process this year, but you just heard kind of the goal, and those were really the priorities, mission and purpose. They need to fit your power, you are, as the electeds, you're the ones that set those priorities and guiding principles. For the town. And then the administrator and staff accomplishes those through the budget. Um, at the end of the day, Lori's going to come forward, pose budget based on the guidance you give her during his work sessions. You approve or disapprove or modify according to what your priorities are. And I would just. I guess the last thing, the last comment, reasonable, is, Mary, you raise a phenomenally important issue about debt-free soundback. Which is really what you can do. There's so much more available right now through the infrastructure and the I H A N. The new budget reduction or equation rationale. You can incur a little bit of debt, take that debt, leverage it, so much money. Um, right now, it's just the state revolving fund, water, water, made a new structure, waste water projects. You would qualify for debt relief, forty-nine percent for a billion and a half dollars. So basically, if you took out a three million dollar loan, a million and a half of that loans would disappear, it's free money. You can use that three million to match an energy impact or get another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So essentially, for a quarter and a half million dollar investment, you can get three point seven five million dollars. Worth of products or, or even structure returning back to your chalune. That beats the heck out of taking that, that same one point seven five of saved up reserves and only getting one point seven five. So it is something to think about during the process. Um, strongly recommended, and C M L, C M L webinars, financing, and how debt structured. Who bonds or should purchase, um, do those, because it is a great financing factors. But I'll just answer any questions with that. I love this process, strength, the department heads for it. We're organized, Lori's a great job, effective for this talk, definitely presenting this written documentation. Um, but any questions you might have, I think, you know, don't refund it, help fund the taper. Help fund water, um, we're here to help the town succeed. I'll tell you what to do, how to do it. You tell us, you never want to see it, and that's fine.
We're not going to do that.
I mean, it's not, I, I really, for you, don't just tell us the matter. Our goals, we work with Lori and staff, but look ahead, put the projects for the coming three or four years. Help your staff develop those projects, so that they're successful when you go buy a rent. Heard a lot about code rewrites. We can help you get money for code rewrites, but we are both, we are developing offices that specializes in code rewrites. Um, let's not, let's get out there on our own, figuring that out, we can get you the free twice.
Okay.
Um, just here to say, we're here to help, um. I don't know, I, I don't know, how many of you remember Windstorm, that made four?
Four, I don't seem to remember, no.
One of the ones in the military station in Fort Carthage, became one of the wind train exercise, can't appeal. Now, big storm. I was in the engineering, a couple executive officers, we came flat streets, whatever. With all those, I mean, strivers and back roads, it was great. Stop me to go, I'm on my way to a scooter, waiting to place the E on the way to scooter.
Oh, well, I know, well, I'm going to, I think you're forgetting here, this is the first time we've all gone through this process and I'm new. You know, a lot of people are brand brand new, a lot of people have been here for a very long time, this is new. So I want a new way to move, it's not letting them into balls I am in the board. I, I just wanted your thoughts on how it went and I think we were pretty efficient in using time. And, and in any feedback you have for us to improve it next time.
I think for where you are relative to the back room, I hope that it. For Gency, for Gency to refer to, you did it right enough. Um, I, I would recommend to all, sat included, look at the town of Bassau. And, and on their website, they have something they call strategic, strategic. Framework. Yeah, strategic framework, and then they have a strategic work plan. They developed their strategic work, their strategic framework back in around nineteen, I think. And they revisit it every year, and where their core principle is what they want their town to be. Every year, they go over budget cycle, revisit that. What do we need to do as a town on the next budget cycle? To move us forward in these key areas. You can't really do that unless you go back and start that strategic planning process. Like I said, to make, do that in preparation for this budget cycle, but when you finish this budget cycle. Next frame, next step, stronger, right, and then. Get engaged, you can use DOLA if your regional manager is available and available to help. You can use a consultant, you can help find consultants, free to do that, and plenty of them will help do it. Um, but I think that's key to even making the budget process better and strong.
And then the question is, so you mentioned that we have, I see this is pretty clearly our two hundred, uh, two thousand and nineteen, for our, just go out on, let's say, honestly, we need to update that. And I'm wondering, what do other cities do? I mean, I can poke around, but we might know better and tell us what we do. Should we post departments by our articles or anything?
There's no right answer. There's room in eyes, it's what you have capacity for. And you spoke of capacity, you know. The, the horrible thing about being size town large, you have lots of needs. Good news is, there's an answer coming. Um, we are funding what we call grant navigations in each of the cons. And those cons are supposed to work with their communities to help pursue a. Um, quick advertising club. You can go to the small community workshop, which I think we're hoping is Solita or Alamosa, where this is somewhere down in South Bay. In October, um, we'll have a whole session of this, that was great, and how they're supposed to be working on these contracts, that's a really difficult. But it's still difficult, and then one thing I strongly encourage you not to do. Pursue money first. Pursue your projects first, and then find money that fits your projects. Sometimes we see jurisdictions and say, hey, there is a new funding for this. Wasn't on our plan, but let's go get the funding and change it. You lose your priorities, you lose track, you go off, you won't get the thing that really needs done. Um, pull on my feathers, pursuing the things that are important to you.
That small communities workshop is October twelfth in Solita, so.
Oh, see, maybe you know, where at, man?
It's in Solita, I, I don't know yet.
Oh, I think that's the one that was at the, uh.
Might be at the steam plant.
Yes. Well, thank you for coming here and helping us through this first process and we engage. Not used to having DOLA, but we're, we're, we will. Lastly, we.
Well, I'm going to put my sandwich, I could include that, but it was on region, that happened before the poll.
Uh, is it your impression that, that the new regional manager for DOLA will be, uh, in Alamosa? Or did we not know? Okay, alright.
It's generally a requirement in their region.
Yeah.
Occasionally, they'll let somebody who's just outside of their region, and the only real reason is we travel a lot. And we want to be somewhere.
Christie was in Pacha Street, space, so she was kind of central to our energy.
Any last, any last thoughts?
Sounds like you need a grant writer. Well, that writer, I don't have the book, that writing can be.
And that's, and that's something we, we are getting some trade in house to do now, and we can chip away at some of that. And, and maybe not pass up some things that are coming down the vector again. I, I think that there's a, well, there's a good discussion there to maybe share, or it is a full competition shared out.
Yeah, I know that that's the means and to, we're in.
Oh, Tom, remember, we, you know, your head up.
Dana, you have a question?
Uh, not, just a couple of things. One is, first of all, I apologize for my erratic internet connection. I know I got bumped off a couple of times. Um, and just a side note, I am, and this may be a consequence of the internet connection, but. Like, I'm hearing the days very well and the people at the podium very well, but the side table is, is really erratic. I've had a lot of trouble following Lori and, uh. And, and anybody else who's seated at that table. So I don't know if that's, that's my connection or if that's just a situation. Um, but aside from that, I, I just als- I, I wanted to second something that Max said earlier. That I, I, I would like to, I mean, I think a lot of these positions that have been brought up. Um, both that have already been added to our, our city ro- um, employee roster and are, we're planning to add are really good ideas. They're long overdue. Um, but I, I do. Know that adding employee salaries and additional benefits has a much different impact on our budget than a capital purchase. And so I know that some of that will be reflected in the upcoming budget sessions that where Donna prepares all of that. But I, I, I am also feeling, maybe it's just moving so quickly, I just feel a little. Uh, a, a little bit breathless over the potential impact of all these different positions, even though I know our, our. Our, our incoming, uh, sales tax has been so much higher. I'm just, I just, I, I'm just feeling a little bit nervous. But I, I understand, we'll talk about the, the budget. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Dana. I, I would echo that. It does make me a little nervous, uh, to be, to be expanding as rapidly as we are. Uh, but I'd say we're also playing from behind, so, you know, in, in some of these cases, absolutely necessary.
Agreed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, it's not six forty-five, but it's not bad. Thank you, Lori.
Yes.
Nicely done. This was great.
I was going to say something about mass, but.
Thank you. You wouldn't want.
What are your, what are your favorites?
You wouldn't, oh, I don't know.
Thank you, Chris. I thank you, Dana.
Great, that was. Margaritas, I like. I knew I liked it.